Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to Tuesday, February 9th work session of the Board of County Commissioners. It is just a reminder, this is a work session. It's something new we're doing. There'll be no votes or decisions made today. This is a chance for the commissioners to talk in the sunshine and to hear from folks. The agenda is mostly information items and discussion items. At the end, we'll have a commissioners' corner where any commissioner can give an update on something they've got working out there. But it's just a way to share information and to get more conversation going amongst us rather than rush them in meetings. So just wanted to remind everyone, there will be no decisions or votes taken today as this is a work session. So as always, we start the meeting with prayer and the pledge. I'll ask Commissioner Parker to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Wright to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Join me in a word of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much, God, for the opportunity to be gathered here today, Lord. Just, I pray that you'll bestow wisdom and knowledge on us, God, as we work through these things to hopefully not only better our community for today, God, but also for future generations, Lord. I pray for leadership, Lord, at every level throughout this country, God. I pray for your hand of healing as we've still got so many families that are suffering through sickness, God. And I just pray that you'll just help our community through this time, Lord. We'll give you the praise, the honor, and the glory in Jesus Christ's precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we get to the community corner and the first item, there was a suggestion made to me. This is new to everyone. It was phoned to me last night about this meeting. Obviously, we don't put a time limit on our other meetings, but this is a work session and we don't make agenda items. So someone said, hey, have you thought about putting a time limit on the work session so folks could plan their day, the staff could plan their day? And we know there's a definite end to it since it's a work session. So it was just a suggestion to me. I says, hey, I don't have that authority to make that decision. It's up to the board members. So I'm willing to enter. If you want to talk about that, if not, we'll just let the meeting roll until it rolls. So I'm open to suggestions.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
As vice chairman, I would support that. That's, you know, four hours long. That way the people who want to come in the morning know that, you know, if they have to schedule time off of work or whatever, they can be back by, say, 1:00, 1:30. And if we go much longer, we got a break for lunch anyway. So I would support, you know, putting that kind of parameter on. And if we go over 10, 15 minutes, that'd be, you know, so be it. But pretty much put the 8:30 to 12:30 parameters on this, on this meeting.
Commissioner Parker, any input on that?
I could support it, especially since the Commissioner Cole mentioned lunch. He knows that's what I wake up thinking about. Even if you did a 8:30 to 12, the refreshing thing is that, for one, we know it's not going to turn into a marathon session and we'll, we'll be able to have these every month. And I'm appreciative to, I believe it was you and our county administrator for coming up with the idea of these work sessions. I'm looking forward to them and it, and it does kind of back the pressure off of making a decision. So even if we did 8:30 to 12 or 8:30 to 12:30, I'd support either one. Today, I will have to excuse myself about a quarter to noon if we're still going to an appointment that I couldn't get out of, but I would support that if I saw the board.
Okay. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to hear from the citizens regarding this issue on the, on the, on stopping the work session at a certain time. I, I can support it if, if pretty much the citizens are okay with it. The only thing is, like today, we're discussing the water issue and there's a lot of folks here that want to give their input on the water issue and I don't want that to be stopped because we don't have enough time. I want to make sure that everybody gets their time to speak on that issue. I have a presentation and, and, and so I, that's, that's my only thing on certain issues that if the public wants to hear. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would agree that we should certainly, I think it's reasonable, set some time of time limit, generally speaking, on work sessions. Not regular meetings, but I think the work session where this is a lot of brainstorming and just an opportunity for the commissioners to discuss things out in the open. Generally speaking, I would support a four-hour time limit.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, typically we all talk about, and then I let the public speak. So I wasn't gonna do that without letting the public speak. So is there anyone here that sees a concern with that? If we go for four hours, starting at the next meeting, this meeting, we didn't advertise that, so this meeting will go as long as we need. Jerry, I need to have some input, just trying to be respectful of time and like to hear your input.
Jerry Cooley, Milton, Florida. It seems like to me the work sessions is when you ought to allow more public input rather than less. You've got a couple items on here that I would ask the chair to, and this board, to be a little understanding. There are some passionate things that will probably be said today. When you try to box in a timeframe, it makes it difficult. You know, we may get hung up on number two and then you don't have time for number three and four. I'm just saying, we got a pretty good crowd this morning for an 8:30 meeting. Let's take advantage of that.
Yeah, I just said, Jerry, we're gonna not put it on for today. We'll let this meeting go today. I want to advertise it to folks and that'll help the staff go, hey, this one's hot. We probably should put this and only one other item on the next work sessions, but this would be for all future meetings, like I said. Is there any problem with that? So Dan, if we could just make that policy adjustment for the next month's work session?
Sure.
I think that'll work out and it'll help folks to plan, so. Okay, I do have the speaker sign-in sheet. As we get to each item, I will call those folks up in the order they signed in since I only have one sheet. If you didn't put an agenda topic in just public forum, we'll save that till the, nope, we actually got that at the start. So I'll go down the list of folks who just didn't put a specific topic. If it is a topic on the agenda, we would ask you to wait till that agenda item comes up. So let me start with Mr. Tony Hughes. Morning, Tony.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm back.
Always good to see you.
Thank you. I wanted to, to follow up again with, I mean, a presentation a few weeks ago about doing a memorial dedication of the Navar Causeway on behalf of Master Sergeant John Chapman, who was the first recipient of the Medal of Honor in the Air Force since the Vietnam era. And also to name the Navar Bridge in honor of our Air Commando community. Thirteen thousand people strong that live in the community are active duty, retired, and dependents of those active duty and retired individuals. Just a quick update, I've got a, I emailed almost all this information to you just, I think, Friday. I've got 94 pages of 1,250-plus signatures of people supporting this, this proposal. I did have a, we do have a website up now, aircommandobridge.com, so that's a great resource for anyone to go to if you're looking for some additional information about what's, what's driving this idea. I did receive a communication from John Chapman's wife, Valerie Chapman Nestle, and I would like to read that to put that in the record. And she wanted me to communicate this to you on her behalf. I'm honored that John's name, excuse me, is being considered for the renaming of the Navar Causeway. I've lived in Navar since 2004. My first visit was in 2002, the year John died, for ceremonies related to him. Over the years, I've spent countless hours on Herbert for memorial services for our special tactics airmen, changed command ceremonies, and multiple functions honoring John. The Air Commandos play a vital role in the defense of our nation. They're a large part of our communities. John spent time here in his early years of training. I believe, I believe it is a very honorable, it is very honorable to rename the Navar Bridge and the Causeway after true American heroes, respectfully Valerie Nestle, Valerie Chapman Nestle. We received letters of support from the Combat Control Association, the Emerald Coast Military Affairs Council. I have a letter on its way from the Air Commando Association, which is 6,000 members strong. Just due to COVID, they're having a hard time getting meetings scheduled and this is a board action for them. But I have talked to Dennis Barnett and Norm Brozdick, who Chairman Peach knows very well, and they have assured me that it is a done deal and it will be on its way. We also, you may start seeing these posters in retail stores storefronts. We have some nice posters that were printed up for free for us, image printing in Fort Walton Beach, who are obviously big Hughes supporters. Also, I had hoped that retired Lieutenant General Brad Heidhold would be here today, but unfortunately, he had a business arrangement he could not get out of, so he sent a letter. It's addressed to you, Chairman Peach. I would like to read that to get it in the letter, in the letter as well. Dear Chairman Peach, proud business commitments prevented me from attending the commission workshop today, so please allow this letter to express my very strong support for designating the bridge on to Navar Beach as the Air Commando Bridge and the Causeway to the beach as the Master Sergeant John Chapman Memorial Causeway. I was honored to serve our country in the United States Air Force for 44 years. During that time, I was stationed at Herbert Field for over 14 years on eight separate assignments. My last assignment was as the commander of Air Force Special Operations Command. My wife and I bought our first home in Navar back in 1995 and have been homeowners in Santa Rosa County ever since. We purchased our permanent retirement home in Pace three years ago. I'm proud to say that both my daughter and her family, as well as my son and his family, also make their homes in Santa Rosa County. Santa Rosa County became the forever home of the Heidhols because of our numerous assignments to Herbert Field and Air Force Special Operations Command. While not everyone is fortunate to serve as the commander of AFSOC, my story of service at Herbert Field and calling Santa Rosa County home for a major part of my AFSOC career is not unique within the community of Air Commandos. Due to the highly specialized missions carried out by Air Commandos and the abundance of training ranges, it is not unusual to see airmen in special operations spend the majority of their careers stationed at Herbert and often retiring here after their service in the Air Force is done. They are truly woven into the fabric of our county and our communities, and I believe they are deserving of having the bridge in Navar Beach named in their honor. You're probably aware that Master Sergeant John Chapman was originally awarded the Air Force Cross for his actions on that mountain in Afghanistan in 2002. Airmen under my command at AFSOC conducted the subsequent investigations that discovered the true nature of his heroism that fateful day, and it was my honor to make the formal recommendation to award John Chapman our nation's highest, our highest honor, the Medal of Honor. John Chapman embodied the Air Commando ethos that day as well as demonstrating with his actions the special tactics airmen's motto, "First there, that others may live." John Chapman died fighting on that mountain to save the lives of his teammates. His name deserves a place of honor where it will never be forgotten. It is my fervent hope that you and your fellow commissioners will see fit to honor John Chapman and the other 13,000 active duty retired independents of the Air Commando family who, who call Santa Rosa County their home. Thank you for all that you do for our county. Signed, Brad Heidhold, Lieutenant General, retired, United States Air Force. And Lieutenant General Heidhold and his family live at Mountain Crest Avenue in Pace, Florida. So what I would really like to do today, you know, this is actually, I've got, I'm, I'm not immune to what's on your agenda today. I know what is facing our county. I know that there's some really serious, very weighty issues that you're gonna be evaluating today and in the months to come. I know that I look at our nation, I see the issues that are facing our nation, and frankly, it's a lot of doom and gloom. I'm gonna be honest with you. I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot that people are worried about, concerned about, have, you know, kind of a gloomy outlook over. This is something that's good. This is something that if you decide to take this action, it is something that will make 13,000 people that are your constituents, your voters, our citizens, very happy on day one. This is something that will make thousands and thousands of other Santa Rosa County citizens who support the military and, and want to show in a big way their appreciation for what the military does in our community. It's gonna make them very happy as well. This is a good thing. This is something that I think is fairly easy for you to do, and I think it's something will make a lot of people happy. I said again, this is not gonna cost the county a penny. If you pass the resolutions to do this, as soon as the county staff tells me how much those signs are gonna cost and how much it's gonna cost for the road crews to go out there and erect the signs, it's gonna take me about 10 minutes to raise the money. I mean, I've got people literally every day saying, where can I send money to right now to make this happen? And so I'm like, okay, hang on, they gotta approve it first. But I would really like to, I mean, if there, if there, is there anything else we can do? We've had over 20,000 views of our Facebook page. Again, we've got the, we've got the signatures. We're doing all we can to raise public awareness of it. We're not trying to do this in secret or under the, in the dead of night. We really want this to be a community, a heavily supported community event. And I would just like to, if there's anything else we can do to get this on an agenda.
Tony, I appreciate you coming as always, and a lot of the Air Commando Association has reached out to me as well. So what I would like to suggest is, I promise to put this as an agenda item. I think if we could get the staff to put this on the next working session and give us a presentation on laying out the procedures and the process of naming the bridge, then we will come to the way ahead at that working session and then it would be on a voting meeting agenda, you know, at the next opportunity. So if that's fair with you, I want the folks to understand the process for, you know, how we go about doing this, because we all see the signs out there. And, you know, there's no doubt, you got that, you're back up there and that. So that's what I'd like to ask staff, if that's okay with my fellow commissioners, is to...
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, go ahead.
I appreciate you, Mr. Hughes, for bringing this up. The issue I have is how, how this was brought up. It all started, there was a boat parade down in Navar to support President Trump. It was, it was the largest boat parade, the Guinness Book of World War, largest boat parade in the country. And there were people that came from all over in this boat parade. And apparently, a bunch of citizens from our area got together and they looked at that bridge and they said, we want to name that bridge after President Trump. And they got, they, they pushed it, they pushed it. I hadn't heard one word in the, for years about renaming the bridge. Not one word from anybody. And then those citizens finally came up here and they, and they asked, they said, we would like to name it after President Trump. And it was gaining massive support. And you want to talk about 20,000 people, well, about around 80,000 people voted for President Trump. Of course, not everybody is gonna be, you know, in support of naming the, the bridge just because they voted for President Trump. We understand that. But the, the issue I have is where this came from in the sense of, you know, the bridge was, was asked to be named after President Trump, and then now, all of a sudden, a week later, you know, another group comes and asks it to be named. And I feel that the whole purpose of this is to not name it after President Trump, come up with something else. And you had tons of roads all around the county. You got the pier, you got the park, out of all places, you know, the, the bridge, it just, I find it suspicious. I believe that it's, it's an effort to stop it from being named after President Trump. Now, my opinion about this, where we go from here is, we do, as Commissioner Peach said at the last meeting, we got a lot of issues right now. We got, we gotta solve this water issue. We gotta solve, I got citizens, you know, in my district that are, you know, I gotta take care of infrastructure, I gotta take care of flooding. I got a lot of work to do right now. And I would like personally to just put this discussion, you know, about, because it's gonna be, we got you, we got the Trump supporters, you know, it's gonna be a battle, I see. I really see it as, as a battle. And, and I'll tell you what, I like your idea. The problem is, it will offend Trump supporters. It will clearly offend the mass majority of Trump supporters because they will see it for what it is, a way to stop it from being named after President Trump. And so my suggestion to the board is let's, you know, let's give it three months, let's sit back on this issue, let's talk about, you know, let's, let's talk about infrastructure right now. We have so many county issues to solve right now. I don't want this fight right now. And I would just like to ask my board, let's put it off for, for three months at least, the whole, the whole discussion that, you know. But I do, I do appreciate the work you've put into it. I, I'm not discounting your work and all that, but for me, I would, I would like to ask that if we're gonna discuss the, the bridge naming issue, since the Trump supporters brought it up first, that that's where the discussion starts first. And then if this board, you know, goes, wants to go in a different direction, then, you know, I would be fully, you know, and looking at another option. And there's, not only your option, there's some great citizens too. I mean, there's some folks that want to name it after Ira Mae Hewitt. There's some folks that want to name it lots of different things. And so I, I believe that, you know, I'm, I'm listening to everybody's voice. Now, I'm for Trump Bridge, okay? I think that's well-known, but I am open to listen to other, other options. But I do think we need to put this off for three months, and so that's what I'm gonna do.
Could I respond to your comments, please?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Hughes. So, so I heard from, well, let me start off by saying categorically, what you're saying is just completely not true. This is not an effort...
Please, we will maintain decorum in the meeting, Mr. Moore.
This is not in any way an effort to, if I could have the mic, please. This is not any way, an effort to derail anything involving President Trump at all. We believe we have a better idea that this is a, okay? I will confess, I mean, the inspiration came from the first efforts to name the Causeway after Donald Trump. And a group of us got together and said, you know, really, there, there's more impact to our county from 13,000 people that live here, and that's where we feel like it should be honored. So I had conversations with the, the Trump supporters you're talking about, and I've assured them, this has nothing to do with that. What they told me was, what they wanted to do was actually change the name of the road, to actually change the green road signs to Donald Trump Causeway. We don't care. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for a memorial designation, just like Highway 98 through Navar is the Charlie and Shirley Brown Memorial Highway. Nobody changed the name of Navar Parkway. Nobody refers to it as the Charlie Brown, Shirley Brown Highway. They still call it Navar Parkway. But there is memorial dedications on those roadways that dedicate that to two of the most leading citizens in, in the Navar community. Sheriff, Sheriff Hall has got an honorary designation of Highway 93 in Pace. We didn't change the name of the road, and so we're not proposing to actually change the physical name of the road. As I understand, as, and I've, I've talked to two people involved with the, with the Trump naming movement, if you will, they're saying, look, what, what we're doing is not in conflict with what they're trying to do. They want to actually change the name of the road, which is changing the maps, changing the mailing addresses, changing the GPS software. We're not talking about doing any of that. We're just looking for a memorial dedication for, for the roadway.
Thanks, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak in this top?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Sam Mullins, 59, 22000 Road. Mr. Hughes and I had a back and forth on Facebook until I was pulled from Facebook because I supported Trump. And we're no longer able to have that conversation because I'm being banned because I'm supporting Trump. I want everybody to know here that I was elected to be a representative of the National Republican Convention in 2016 as the chairman of the Republican Party from 2015 and 16 to represent us and to represent Trump as a delegate. Our Republican Party asked, we went through asking people from this, this staff and this board, as well as the state, if anybody else wanted to put forth any kind of resolution or any kind of project to rename the Navar Bridge. We were told no one had. Two weeks after we approached this board, Mr. Hughes put it up on Facebook that they were gonna rename it after the special operations. Now, I'm in full support of them. There's several county properties, schools, parks, roads, other county roads that can be named, and I'm in full support of that. But it is highly suspect, and I do mean highly suspect, that two weeks after I came before this board and asked for the Navar Causeway and Bridge to be named after Trump, and had the support of our Republican Party and as well as our Republican clubs to do this, that Mr. Hughes, all of a sudden, decided we need to name it after the special operations. So I just want that to be known because this seems like it's a subversive effort to try to undermine our efforts to get the bridge named after Trump. And I want to remind everybody that in this election, we had 74% turnout in this county, had over 72% of those voters vote for Trump, the highest vote total ever in our county for any president, and the highest turnout ever in this county in a presidential election. And I feel like that that's why our Republican Party has asked for this Causeway and Bridge to be named in honor of President Trump. Now, that being said, you all can go forward with whatever God be necessary to do as a board. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Sir?
Hello, you too, GovBeast Florida. Good morning, commissioners. I would like to point out something here this morning. This is the clipboard that I was using on September 5th at the largest boat parade that probably ever happened on, on the face of earth. And Mr. Ray White and as well as Mr. Miller present here came up with the idea of the Donald J. Trump Causeway. I didn't have this idea. My only contribution was to draft a petition that we're still circulating among Santa Rosa residents to gather support for the idea. I watched a meeting back in December from my car in Gwinnett County, Georgia, when I was campaigning for Senator Perdue and Senator Loeffler, and I, I saw the meeting, I saw what you all said. We were told TBD, Mrs. Gunnar presented the idea, as well as my colleague Cindy came, came on on my behalf to present the idea. The, the whole idea of naming the bridge, the Donald J. Trump Causeway, came from the fact that that bridge didn't have any name since, I believe, 1965. We had the boat parade passing under that bridge, all the boats were counted under that bridge. This is a tremendous amount of business for our local restaurants who struggled so much during COVID, and this is something that bring, that can bring, that is a potential of bringing so much business from out of state. I was there doing voter registration and I talked to a lot of people. People drove from Texas, Arizona, even, you know, New Mexico, even some people came from, from the state of Washington to see this. This can help our own local businesses as well as honoring our, or the best commander in chief we, that we ever had. President Trump has been very, very good for the military. We, we love the military, and, and this was our way of, of celebrating this. So these are my points for the idea. We started the, the effort and I find it suspicious as well that suddenly we come up with another idea that overrides our first idea. And I can tell you something, talking to the residents of, the residents of Santa Rosa County, Wallfield cheated by this election. There is a lot of excitement for naming the, the, the bridge, the Donald J. Trump Causeway. And I hope that you see this, I hope that you understand what your voters want. It's very easy to put a Facebook page with tons of likes of people who hate President Trump. They may, these likes may be coming from out of the county. I think that the people from our county has, have a lot of desire to name this, this bridge the Donald J. Trump Causeway. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for your time this morning, and thank you for keeping Florida great.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Cole? I, I just, before the next speaker, I just wanted to mention, when there was a news channel, I think it was Channel 5 News, they, they called me and I didn't end up interviewing with them, but they did a, they did a story, and one of the reporters actually went to Navar and talked to random people, and he was trying to find whether they're for it or against it. He went to seven people to try to find someone against it, had the eight, he went, every single person, you know, people at the park, to the beach, you know, residents of Santa Rosa County. Out of the seven, they were in favor of it, and then he found one guy, you know, on Navar Beach that was, that was against it and wanted it to be Biden Bridge. So I think that, you know, I wouldn't, I think Facebook, you know, has, I remember it was 90% that was against... it was 90% that was against the, uh, Second Amendment sanctuary, 90% of Facebook was against pro-life sanctuary, but when you saw the voters come out, you saw what the real numbers were. And, uh, so I'd recommend if this board wants to know, you know, the polling at it, you know, just go and, you know, don't talk to your normal groups that you talk to, go out and, and go to a restaurant and just ask some folks, what do y'all think about naming the bridge, you know? This or this? Just ask them. I guarantee you're going to find that a heavily majority support naming it after Trump. But, but this is, this is a battle, and I, I personally would just rather, right now, take care of our water issues, take care of the, you know, right now, I would just wait for three months. That's my opinion, but next.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Coxville, Milton, Florida. Um, I'm a big Trump supporter. Um, I know I have fellow Trump supporters in this room who are saying, yes, we, we should name the bridge for Mr. Trump. Um, I disagree. I think that would be making a huge political statement on behalf of the voters in Santa Rosa County. Not every voter in Santa Rosa County voted for President Trump, which I'm sorry to say, and I understand Mr. Calkins' passion for Mr. Trump, because I think we all have it too. However, I think if Mr. Trump was approached and asked, what do you think? I think he would say, name it after our military. He supports our military wholeheartedly. Um, our community is a huge military community. Probably some voted for Mr. Trump and some did not, but they all serve our country. So, um, I, I just wanted to, to make that statement. I may not make it home live, but, uh, uh, so please, please consider that. Uh, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Wallace. Next.
Debbie Ginnon, 2143 Chatsworth Drive, Navarre. Um, I am, uh, going to say that in response, not every voter has to vote for who we want to name, causeways, bridges, roads, parks. Um, they don't have to vote for those people. We haven't in the past. We've had roads named after presidents in the past. We've had roads and, and bridges named after, um, uh, you know, Martin Luther King. Uh, this was something that was brought before you before, and if I remember correctly, it was one of those things that was like, well, we're not going to address that now. Well, we'll look at putting that on the agenda in the future. Um, and then in the meantime, someone else has brought that idea before you, and all of a sudden, yeah, okay, let's get that on the agenda. Well, what happened to, let's get the President Trump proposal on the agenda? Um, but bottom line to it is, uh, there was a previous push, uh, to name the Causeway and, um, Bridge after President Trump that came up, you know, before you, uh, a few months ago. Um, but, um, President Trump has done more for veterans, and I'm a veteran. Uh, I'm one who has received positive results from the efforts that President Trump did during his time as our president. Uh, he's done more for veterans and military in this area than presidents in the past since Ronald Reagan. Uh, he brought, uh, our Veterans Administration into the modern age. He has made it to where our veterans have the opportunity to get the care that they were not getting under previous presidents. So he deserves our recognition in an area filled with military veterans. My question is, if the effort to name it after the Air Commandos and the hero that they want to name it after, um, is not to undermine the efforts to name the bridge after President Trump, then why the Causeway? Why the bridge? Why did they go after what we were asking to be named after President Trump? Why wouldn't it be more appropriate for them to go after the new flyover that is at the entrance to the Special Ops Base in, uh, Herbert Field? That flyover doesn't have a name. That flyover...
Colonel Bud Day Overpass.
Okay. It has been named? Well, that whole stretch of road too was after, um, Colonel Bud Day. Uh, you know, why can't they go after, um, some area that's closer to Herbert? To me, the fact that they are going after the same exact area, the Causeway and the Bridge, that was previously brought before you to be named after President Trump, to me, that shows that, yes, they are trying to undermine what we've been trying to do previous to them coming up with this quote-unquote idea. You know, our idea led to their idea? Sure, of course it did, but why not name something else instead of going after what was previously looked at to be named after President Trump? Thank you very much.
Thanks. And Deb, just, just to clarify for folks, you stood there in December and pushed me to get this on the agenda, and I promised you the first quarter. So if you want, we could play the tapes, but you stood up there and demanded to know when it would be on the agenda, and I promised you it would be on the first quarter. We're still in the first quarter, so that's where the genesis of this coming back around came from. I just wanted that clear, that we didn't blow you off in December. I promised you the first quarter.
Okay, but you also just told this gentleman that you work with him to get it on for him. When are you going to get it on for us?
It's going to be one agenda item, not each individual, Deb. That's how we work. Ma'am, do you want to speak?
Yvonne Harper, Navarre, Florida. This isn't the issue in which I came to speak, but, um, listening to the comments is rather interesting that to state it's not a battle, and then for people who make accusations about they're going after, I mean, they're using battle-esque language. Um, I don't think it really matters that the Navarre Beach Causeway is named after. It does have a name, it's the Navarre Beach Causeway, and I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't care one way or the other if it's got a name or doesn't have a name. But as a veteran, I would say, and I think there's one, two, three, four up on the, on the dais, that without veterans, there would have been no President Trump. So I would support, if it comes down to a choice, that of the veterans. And then stating that seven people, that's, that's hardly a resounding endorsement of, of anything. And, um, one other thing, Commissioner Calkins, it's not your board, you use the language that my board, it's the county's board, and you represent all the residents of Santa Rosa County. And the veterans are the ones that have given us and fought and died for the freedoms that we have that allow each of you to stand there. So again, I don't, I don't personally, I don't care one way or the other, but I do think it's important to not use, you know, language that is divisive, just let the, um, issues be heard before the commission, let the citizen's voice be heard, and then make a decision from there. But, um, I do think, again, without the veterans, we wouldn't even be standing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. Sir, you've, you've already spoken on this issue, I'm, we're not going to make a decision, no, sir. Um, we're not going to get up here and rebut everyone's, this is a public forum, everyone's had their chance. What I would like to, uh, ask the board is if we give the staff direction to bring us at the work session, the procedures and, and a couple of options of a way to make a deci- one, make a decision if we want to rename it, two, if we do, different options, as we saw in Pensacola with the Three Mile Bridge, there was a first idea for that, and then a bunch of ideas came out. So ideas come out of other ideas. That's America, um, and, and that's the process. To take Ira May out of it, there is a letter from, uh, Neighbor Coming, so there is no competition for Ira May Bruce. They are looking at memorializing a section of road in the south end of the county. That'll be coming before us as a, as a separate item. So, uh, unless, I want to hear from either Commissioner, so we can move on, since this isn't a decision meeting, maybe get some direction for the staff to bring us the procedure, um, and options if we do choose to rename the bridge, to either set up, you know, citizen committees or things like that, kind of what Esquimia did before they settled on, uh, renaming the Three Mile Bridge. So, uh, Commissioner Calkins.
Yeah, I, I just would recommend, uh, based on all the other issues, I'd just like to at least hold off for three months, uh, take no action for three months, if, if that be okay with the board, just so we can focus on these other issues. That's what I would recommend.
Well, I'm, I'm going to have to counter that, because it was brought before us in December, and you were pushing hard, so I think we can multitask as a board, um, that's part of our job. So, um, my push is to have staff bring us options at the next work session, and we could set a timeline from there. Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd support that, but I'm a, I'm going to put it on the record right now, I'm not going to vote for renaming it anything other than what it's named now. I do like the suggestion of a, of a, uh, you know, kind of like we've done the other roads, uh, memorial, uh, because of, you know, all the changes that would be necessary. So I would support a memorial dedication, as was mentioned, with, uh, you know, the other memorial roads in the area. I think our San Point Roads after Curtis Golden, or, so, uh, I would support that idea, but I'm not, I'm not going to support renaming any of the roads.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Is any other comments before we move on? Is the staff direction clear? Commissioner Calkins.
Also, I would like to say, uh, another option, you know, uh, because we do have, I, I just want to make sure President Trump is on there, but another option we have is, uh, we can take names, you know, the names that were mentioned, and put it on the ballot, and let the voters decide. Uh, that would, that would lay it off of us, and that would, we could put Navarre Beach Bridge, like Commissioner Cole said, you know, like just, and, and the voters can choose, you know, Ira May Bridge, Donald Trump Bridge, uh, Mr. Tony Hughes's proposal, Commando Bridge. That, I think, would settle this issue. And Commissioner Peach did that with the, uh, pro-life sanctuary, think it was a good thing. That gets it off of us, it gives the voters a chance to decide. So, uh, that's op, one option, uh, I can support, as long as President Trump is on, on, the name is on that, the ballot, then I think that would be a, a good compromise, and I think the public would support it too.
Okay. That, that's a good option, and, and I would expect that to be an option in the staff direction we gave, is to bring us options to choose from that we can all decide on. So, um, if, there's, anyone else that has an issue for public forum that already hasn't been addressed or is not an agenda item? Okay? If not, we will go into, uh, Community Corner, Santa Rosa County Chamber of Commerce.
Sir, we stuck her out to cancel yesterday, late in the day, so we'll just go to the, the first item.
Okay. First item under staff updates is the county courthouse update.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to, um, roll through sort of the last pictures that were taken out of, uh, the aerial photography that was taken out of the courthouse, I thought it'll play while I'm talking. The, the issue here is it's time to talk about the disposition of the courthouse in downtown Milton. Uh, I've had some initial conversations with, um, the city manager. Uh, I, I think there would be some value in, in establishing a joint committee with the city of Milton. There's an article today in the PNJ about the Imogen and, and some of the revitalization efforts, um, that the city council and mayor have started on in downtown Milton with their RFP for the waterfront property. Uh, I think this ties in, and I think it would be appropriate to maybe establish a joint committee, uh, two commissioners, two council members, two stakeholders from the community, maybe the chamber. Uh, Donna couldn't be here today, would, uh, put her on the spot maybe, but, um, I, just wanted to get the board's thoughts and directions, and then I can take that and run with that with the city manager and do a little more detailed planning. Um, but just any thoughts y'all might have on, um, disposition of the courthouse in downtown Milton, while you look at the cool pictures of the new courthouse as the walls go up out there, um, on Avalon Boulevard.
Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Dan, I, I appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't, I don't know exactly where we'll settle as far as committee, no committee, what that looks like moving forward. Um, I know that conversations I've had with folks from the city as far as, uh, represent, you know, elected officials and city manager, I know there's a wide array of thoughts on that board, even as you'll get on this board of things to do. Just as a representative of folks in the city as well as in the county, uh, I would just ask this board to, food for thought, as you consider putting together a committee, I, I heard, you know, possible, um, look on that, it's just that, uh, if there's going to be, I don't know if that would be something that we'll have citizens involved with, it's kind of like TPO where we have a Citizens Advisory Council. Uh, if so, if we have something like that where we have citizens involved to look at it, study it before it becomes to maybe a elected official joint board, I would like that to happen. But my biggest thing is I want to make sure that East Milton area is represented. East Milton towards Holt, which I know is Commissioner Cole's district, uh, but as you know, we're, we're elected at large. Uh, you know, I grew up in East Milton, and, and quite frankly, I think the folks out there in, in East Milton, uh, bear the burden of the traffic congestion more than anybody else, and, and I know that that is a big issue concerning the courthouse and what's going to be done with the courthouse and the historic society is, is there is, uh, definitely, as we have seen even from the Milton Merchants, which is a group put together of business owners, that we've seen petitions in front of this board before, and we've seen it at the TPO, there is a strong divide between folks that want to see traffic capacity improvements go through that area versus ones that don't, and, uh, quite frankly, that's my biggest concern, is these folks commute day to day, um, more so than what the eventual outcome is of, of the building that's past its life purpose. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, far be it for me to tell the city of Milton what to do, um, but I do think standing up some type of advisory council would be, would be very wise. Um, and I think we need to make sure that we have, if we're going to do that, we certainly have plenty of citizen representation, but I'd like to make sure that it's from across the entire county. Uh, city of Milton being the county seat, uh, I, I think it, it, it does kind of belong to everybody in this county, and, um, I would, I would venture to say, I'd like to see every option explored, and, and what to do with that building and that property and how we dispose of it. I think, um, it, it's been proven in, in a number of cities, very successful communities around the country, where private and public partnerships, uh, have been instrumental in actually seeing, you know, major economic, uh, revitalization of, of an area, and I think the city of Milton has a tremendous opportunity to make some improvements, um, with, with us vacating that courthouse in the future. So I'd certainly be of the support of any type of, uh, citizens advisory board and joint board as well.
Commissioner Calkins?
Yeah, I would like to say, uh, Colton basically said everything I would, I would like to say. I appreciate it, Colton, uh, on, uh, on the Citizens Advisory Board. I, I would support that 100%, and, uh, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Parker?
Thank you. I, again, appreciate Commissioner Wright clarifying it, but my biggest thing was not to exclude anybody, just for the record, I just want to make sure that, and I, I know you weren't just saying, I just want to make sure that the folks that do live, uh, primarily in District 2 are, are well represented, because they utilize that area more, uh, than anyone, quite frankly. And, uh, I will refer back to, just so it's in case not brought up in the future, uh, city of Milton board, or it may have been the former mayor, but it was about three years ago, asked Quinn Stewart to come to the Imogen Theater one evening, and it was packed. I don't think there was an empty seat in the house, and, uh, asked him, hey, you know, what can we do from downtown? And there were a plethora of ideas thrown out, but one that stuck out to me is he said when, when the time comes to make a decision about what to do with downtown Milton, because, uh, again, we absolutely want to, to be partners with the city of Milton on this, but I know it is a county building and that we have to decide what to do. One suggestion he had was, and I think this would probably be after a citizens committee that's sort of exploratory, uh, but look at getting an appraisal done on the value of the way it sits versus the way it would be if it was raw ground. And that a way, and specifically towards that public-private partnership, one thing he mentioned, uh, was sometimes we try to preserve things, and I think there's a lot of valor in trying to, uh, preserve history, but also, as you talk with the developer that's trying to do that with the Berry Hill School Complex on Berry Hill Road right now, he'll tell you that the expenses are far more costly to retrofit an old historic building than it would be just to tear it down and redo it, and sometimes that could prove to be prohibitive from future development that they're looking for. So that would be the biggest thing, I just want to remember, or, uh, remind, and that was Mr. Stewart's idea, so I'll give him credit, is to look at the value... valuation of building versus raw ground.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, and I'm sorry if anyone thought I was insinuating that Commissioner Parker was trying to exclude anybody, because I know he wasn't. Yeah, and you bring up Quinn Studer, and that's a perfect example of a public and private partnership that happened in the City of Pensacola, frankly, with a lot of pushback at the time. And now we can look back in retrospect and see, you know, what happened in that community. Took a downtown area that was dead at 5:30 in the evening, and now it's a vibrant, you know, very vibrant nightlife, restaurants, creates a lot of tax revenue for the, for Escamie County, and frankly, improves quality of life. So I just want to make sure we explore those types of options, and can partner with the City of Milton.
I give my opinion, Dan. You know, I think a committee is definitely warranted. You know, the citizens' input is big, but like Commissioner Parker and Commissioner Wright said, you know, we need to explore all options. And I think having a committee after the citizens of the city council and a couple reps from us to do that discussion, and then bring the options back is, is a great way of doing it. I know it's Commissioner Cole's district. You mentioned two commissioners. If you need a second, you know, to sit on that committee, I'm more than happy to, to be a part of that when it comes down to it. So I don't know if Commissioner Cole's gonna impede on this, or are you good with that way ahead?
Commissioner Cole, probably just like Jerry and quite a few other people, we've been dealing with what to do with the entire downtown Milton for, and tried to revitalize it for the 18 years I've been on the Board. And there seems to be a little movement that way, as far as the extension of the boardwalk. And of course, the city bought the old arena, and I would not support the city putting money into that arena. To me, that should be public-private partnership. You know, you, the city leases that piece of property, and that investor chooses to put the money into it rather than tax dollars. I do support, you know, the boardwalk, and I'd be glad to work with the city manager and the city council and citizens to come up with a conclusion of what we do with that building. Mr. Studer also said in that same meeting that Commissioner Parker mentioned, the ideal home run would be to get universities and colleges involved in that, and possibly have satellite campus in place there. And I don't see where it would have to be an individual college or university. Why couldn't, you know, several in this area use that facility for satellite campuses? And in turn, students that possibly attend those classes would utilize some of the facilities downtown, and possibly even live in some of the apartments that could evolve downtown. I see the first thing we do is get rid of the trailer park that we built behind it, and possibly extend that park facility. City of Milton has had a lot of success in bland bands on the Blackwater, and they use a flatbed trailer for their stage. You know, I've suggested, in fact, in my office, I got a drawing of possibly how that park could be extended, and perhaps an amphitheater put on that backside of the building. Because, just one suggestion, there's, there's gonna be hundreds of suggestions come to the, come to us, anything from raising the whole thing, and, and starting all over to renovating it. So I'm willing to work, put in ideas, listen to ideas, and see where we can go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Cooley?
Jay Cooley, Milton, Florida. That courthouse is a special place for those of us who have lived here all of our lives. I would like to point out to the audience and the Board that that courthouse belongs to the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County. It has an inherent value. I would, I would shy towards immediately the suggestion of handing the keys to someone, as been mentioned before. This is an asset that the, that the citizens paid for in its infancy, have added to it, and maintained it since it was built. I want to encourage the Board to think about not Commissioner Parker's real estate sign, but somebody's real estate sign put in front of it, and see if there's an interest. Let me, let me be clear of the historical value here. The two wings, technically speaking, may not meet spec on historical building. However, the center building is most assuredly a historic building. And any suggestion that we take any look at this of... State Road Department's already laid out a plan to alleviate the traffic problems, and it saves the building. It saves the Imogen Theater. I know there's been a lot of gnashing of teeth over that, but they should be out there moving the Fisher Hamilton building today instead of talking about it. I'm not opposed to listening and having a group of folks get together, but keep that primary position of the taxpayers on that building. Let's find a private investor. I have seen some public-private endeavors that have been successful. However, public-private situations usually mean that the public is left holding the bag, and the private makes the profits off of it. And I would be very wary of that without a clearly defined set of rules. But let's think about what we're doing here. This is the heart of the City of Milton. This is an important building to many folks, a great history of Santa Rosa County. I just want to have this as a placeholder today, that we, that we seek someone to buy the building, that will have the resources to keep it in, in, in the state that it's in. And it can be a beautiful part of the City of Milton, and I think it should stay there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Dan, do you have enough guidance?
Yes, sir. I'll work with the city manager on a framework for a citizens advisory committee before bringing something back, that, that would look at this, look at the options, and then maybe bring recommendations to a joint committee of elected officials later on. We have, we have a little bit more than a year. We're not gonna be moving into the new courthouse until probably the second quarter of next calendar year. But I thought it was important to at least use this work session opportunity, get some guidance from the Board. I can take that, work with the city manager, and we can bring something back.
I think one, I mean, I think it's pretty clear from everyone that spoke, that as a minimum, an appraisal of that area is gonna be needed. Do we wanna work, you know, get that piece out of the way? I mean, there's options to have that done, so when the citizens' committee meets, we have those answers. I think an appraisal's gonna have, need to be done, or should be done, regardless of which options we take, so we can answer those questions to the people. I mean, I'm open. Commissioner Cole?
Chairman, I think an appraisal at this time would be a little premature, but I would, I would support starting to get prices on, on moving the trailer park. So, because that's the first thing that's gonna have to happen.
Yeah.
Once that's removed, then I think a better appraisal would come into play. Because anybody's gonna, that appraises is gonna have to say, okay, what's it gonna cost to move this out of the way before we do anything? So I think all of us agree. I think we'd have pretty much a 100% agreement with the city council that Trailer City needs to go away first. So I can support that.
Okay. Commissioner Parker?
I, I agree with Commissioner Cole to the sentiment, that even if we knew we were gonna sell the building, an appraisal today would be totally irrelevant next year. I kind of think the same thing with, as far as the trailers. We may know with great certainty, not absolute, but great certainty, that that's the direction that we're heading. But any contractor submits a bid today is not, I cannot imagine what market force is gonna lock that bid in for a year. And we just heard it'll probably be a year before we get out. So I think at this gesture, probably letting Dan talk with the City of Milton manager, and come back to us with some ideas and suggestions. And I like the fact that at least we're trying to get on the front end, and, and would love to see, you know, I think we're gonna see a wide array of, of citizen ideas on this, but if we could get a committee that could work through that, to bring some suggestions back to a joint board of county commission and City of Milton. And quite frankly, I would love to even see some, some business folks on that, whether that be representatives from the chamber, or businesses from inside the City of Milton and the surrounding areas. I think, quite, quite frankly, we all talk about revitalization and tax dollars, but ultimately, I'm not worried about tax dollars as much as I am job creation and quality of life for those business owners and their employees.
Okay. Great. I think Dan's got the, the ideas to bring us what we need to start working towards that end. Okay. Next on the updates is a development services update.
So this is, is focused on our effort to transition to electronic plan submission, electronic plan review, and comment letters. Ms. Brina can just give an overview, and I know there may be some other specific questions. And Rhonda's here, Rhonda, while the whole development services team is here, Rhonda, Sean, and Chris, so we can answer any questions the Board might have.
Awesome. Thanks, Sabrina. All yours.
Good morning. So Dan is passing out a survey that we conducted in, at the end of July. I spoke to you a couple of months about this project, and I did not talk about this survey, but we did a survey just to kind of set a baseline for where we were on providing service and meeting the customer expectations. And on the first page, one thing that I clearly saw after we conducted the survey, is that the processes are broken, the technology was broken, but staff was doing a good job. They're very professional, they're very courteous. So I thought that was a good baseline for us to know that we need to fix the program, so that they have a program that is much more efficient. And then hopefully, that can help staff to improve a little bit on their customer service, so they're not so overwhelmed. So we're using technology to improve the processes, which will also improve the other aspects of it. We hope to be collecting applications in the system next month. So we've made great strides over the last six months. We have began, begun to test the plan review portion of it with a select few contractors. And the program allows them to see where their plans are in the review process. So they're very excited about that, and that's pretty much where we are. So next month, we'll begin collecting applications in the program, so that anyone who submits for a subdivision plat, or a building permit, or a site plan, they're all gonna be in the same program.
Okay. And Sabrina, I think, I think you're selling yourself short. So if you could share with, I mean, I know what you're working on, because you've been keeping me, but with the public of what your vision is from what we do today, to what we're gonna do when this system gets in place. Because that's, that's the exciting part.
Yes, sir. So currently, if you want to get a building permit, you bring in a set of plans. It gets an application number, and it goes around the office to the different people that have to review it. Now, a contractor will submit their application online. A citizen will submit their application online to build their new house. Let's just stick with that example. And then it will automatically route to all the individuals that have to review that plan. Now, it will go to a zoning tech, and then it goes to a building plans examiner. That will not happen anymore. They can all review the same plan at the same time. So we're gonna be able to conduct that plan review much faster. And then, at the end, the permit tech just hits a button and says, we're ready to issue the permit, and then we issue the permit. So it really is going to make this process much more efficient, and eliminate the paper.
And folks will be able to track the status of their permits. Come on, you're selling yourself short, because this was a lot, a lot of input I got from small businesses and things, that that process took a long time, and they weren't able to track. So this is, this is very exciting for the county, as well as the staff, because we're enhancing their ability to do the great job they do. But this, this is gonna be huge game changer for the county and everyone who does business with the county. So I don't want you selling yours and the staff's effort short, because this is a group effort from the staff.
Yes, sir.
And we're doing it with all in-house folks, correct?
Yes, sir.
We have not hired outside contractors to do this. We're using the resources we have at hand.
Yes, sir. So it is, Adrian Lowndes, our IT director, and his IT team, they're doing a great job. We are meeting with staff out there about the processes, and they're very much involved. And they have a workload that is, it's crazy right now. So they're taking the time to invest in this development. So yes, it's very much a team effort, and we're, we're excited about it, and can't wait for it to be done.
Awesome. Commissioner Parker?
One question, I, this may be more for Dan, but I thought about when we were talking about development services. I did have, it was actually a fellow elected official call me yesterday. He said they'd had a question, and now it just seems as appropriate as offline, about, and I think it's sort of public knowledge. We had an email go out. We've had, I call it the COVID, go through development services. And I guess now, if you call down there, there's just a message that says it's closed until further notice, and appointments only. Do we have any update on when folks will be able to go down there and apply for permits now, or?
We're gonna reassess this week, sir. We had about 25% of the staff between building inspection and permit staff out, including our building official. Rhonda is, is back in the office now. We still have about four folks out, in, really, in some key positions, residential plans being one. So we want to make sure that the workforce is able to get the job done, and can return healthy. We've had, I think our staff has had a mixed experience with the virus, like, like a lot of people, some worse than others. But I want to make sure that the workforce is healthy. We're gonna reassess this week, and we'll put out information by the end of the week.
Thank you. That, I think Brandy and her team, as long as they'll put out a notice just to let people know, updates, that'll be the biggest thing. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that, Sabrina.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, we talked some about possibly outsourcing some of this to get caught up. And I know the outsourced process, third-party process, requires them to take it from beginning to end. Have you heard anything on the legality of maybe stepping in the middle of this? And I've talked to several developers, and explained to them how that would work in my vision, and that they would have to pick up the additional cost of going to that third party, but...
Hit the mic. Rhonda and I had a conversation on this, sir, when she came back to the office. I'll let her give the update.
Yeah, the, a person always has that option, as we've discussed before, to be able to utilize a private provider. What I've been finding is that private providers charge more than what we charge for plan review or inspection services. Certainly, we can look at contracting with a firm that can take our overflow, and establish a guidance to the public, that if you're gonna build 100,000 square foot building, that you would be required to use, utilize a private provider. Sometimes the larger buildings, the 100,000 square foot buildings, the school board project buildings, will slow us down, because those take a long time to review. You have a lot more fire life safety items that you have to review, so it's not a, a quick turnaround. So it does bog us down quite a bit. And as you know, that with school board projects, when they come in, they take priority. We have no choice. State law requires us to have them as priority. And then, of course, we try to expedite any kind of county project that comes through industrial development and that sort of thing. So we are looking at private providers to establish, but I'm gonna have to get with Dan and the legal team to figure out how we go about contracting that out.
I would, I would like to give staff direction to try to expedite that sooner rather than later. But my main question is, right now, we're, we perhaps got behind a little bit, or just because of the COVID thing, get, plain catch-up. From what I've read, you know, a private provider has to start from the beginning and go the whole way through the process, can't step in the middle.
Well, that's correct. On, on plan view or inspection, it's all or none. Now...
But what my question was, can we, is there a means because of this situation, emergency order and everything like that? If we see that situation occurring, can we, I guess, is there a way around that rule of beginning to end, to say, okay, we're gonna let you step in here, because we're trying to get caught up, and, and Mr. Developer, if you want to do that, you're gonna pick up that cost, we're gonna hire, you know, we already got a company on board for the, for the courthouse. Go to them, say, hey, can you pick up our slack, basically? And if so, we're gonna give you these jobs to get caught up on, and the, and the person that owns that job knows they're gonna pay your bill. That's, about in a nutshell, I could do it.
Yeah. And, I mean, we can, if I'm understanding you correctly, that part, you're saying that part of our plan review could go to the outside... of our plan review could go to the outsourced, we could do part in-source. Now, what we would not do is allow someone to start a plan review and then us finish it.
No, no.
It would have to be all or none on the plan review, or all or none on the inspection. Now, some jurisdictions, and the law does allow this, that if a jurisdiction, if someone uses a private provider for plan review, they also require them to use a private provider for the inspection. So, but historically, what we've done, if you've used a private provider for your plan review, and you choose not to use them for inspections, then we pick that up.
Okay, so they can start out with a private provider and then come back to the county on inspections?
For inspections, correct.
But you can't start out with a private provider, with the county, and then go to a private provider?
Well, you just don't want to split up like a plan review, or say, we want you to conduct half of the inspections, and then we'll do the other inspections. Because by law, we can go in and audit inspections. So if you choose to use a private provider on your inspections, then the county has the right to go in and audit that to make sure that the required inspections are being done. But we should never be the primary when you utilizing a private provider. Because the private provider has to provide a certificate of compliance with the Florida Building Codes. And I might add, Commissioner, that part of our, of course, our county is just growing. We are definitely growing in the sense that with just normal development, but what's backlog to some is, of course, the sickness in our department and not having the staff there. But another part of it is, we just had a new Florida building go into effect. So those builders that have been utilizing our master plan program are having to resubmit their plans again on the structural part because the code did change. So the 60 plans that a builder A may have already had in the pipeline approved as master plans, he's having to submit those 60 plans again with updated structural sheets.
Okay. Well, I understand, and that's on the state. I'm still kind of stepping around my question. And you don't have to answer today. If you need help getting caught up, if the department, because of COVID and the influx, you need a little leg up to get caught up, that's why I want us to look into.
Get outsourced, yes, sir.
Can we pass that buck to an independent company and let them help you get caught up?
Yes, sir.
And as this new system's getting, evolving, we can back out of that, you know?
Yes, sir.
And if you don't need that help, then my point's muted. But if we're still getting complaints and getting behind, then we need to take a look at that. And the other thing I want to bring up while we're talking about this, whether it be with engineering, surveying, your department, anything, it's time we take one bite of the apple. When plans get reviewed in engineering, when the surveyor looks at them, anybody looks at them, and they go back and they have comments, and that developer answers those comments, that's it. There's not, well, also, we found this, so we're going to add that to it. And I've heard that over and over again, surveying everybody. You know, you answer the questions on the comments, that's it. Nobody should, any of our departments should be able to say, well, you answered all this, but in the meantime, we found some more. You know, one bite of the apple, that's it.
And I would say this, that at times, we will request something, and when a resubmit comes in, it may flush out something that we have to note. And we do our best, Commissioner Cole, that when that happens, we try to do the best at approving the plans as noted. So the builder can go ahead and get his building permit, but he's aware that he'll have to address the second comment. And we hold hardly, work very, very hard that we're not sending out a comment letter and then coming up with new items at a later date. But unfortunately, sometimes, resubmissions will flush out those additional comments. But we do our best to note the plans, approve them as noted.
Yeah. And I'm hoping that all this work we're doing towards this system is going to take a whole long time.
Most assuredly, yes, sir. I'm very excited about it. I just hate that I'm ending my career when we're fixing to implement such a wonderful program.
I understand. We should have done this 10 years, 20 years ago.
Yes, sir.
Computers have been around long enough that we should have, but you know, we're placed...
Well, the technology wasn't there, but it is there now, and we're getting a bang-up job on our in-house folks and Sabrina's work, and it's just, it's going to be a really good program for us all. And I think that the citizens of Santa Rosa County will be very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Is there anything else, Sean, Sabrina? Again, you know, this is huge. This is something, you know, I've heard about, I think we've all heard about. So I really applaud the efforts of the staff and the team effort to make this better for folks. And I think folks will definitely see those small businesses, those folks will be able to get started quicker and get that process going. So thank you, and keep us informed if you need anything. Okay. Our next item is a big item on the well field. We have at least 10 folks signed up to speak on that. We do have two other items. Out of respect for time, I'll just ask the question. We have an environmental discussion at Waste Pro on the south end. Is there anyone here to speak on that? That's merely an update. So what I'd like to do is try and get folks who, because the well field's going to go for a while, and I'm going to let it go as promised. But if we can get the one or two folks that are here for those smaller items, can we agree to maybe get them forward and moving? And then the second one, or the last one, that's discussing revising civil penalties under code enforcement. That's just a proposal. It's not a formal resolution to vote on, because we'll definitely need a break before well field protection. But if we can eliminate things, we've only been going for an hour and 20 minutes, I'd like to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I just want to say that I oppose increasing the civil penalty fines.
Well, when we get to that item, Mr. Cawkins, the mic will be open for you to speak. I'm just trying to, right now, yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question? You asked me to...
You have to come up.
I guess clarification on what you're proposing. Are you proposing we move the last two items up?
Yeah, before the well field, so in case there's only one person.
Before the well field, so that all we have left is the well field to address.
Exactly.
I see nothing wrong with that personally.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest, but...
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd support that. Let's go ahead and knock out four and five, take a break, and come back.
Sounds good. Okay, we will move to item number four, environmental discussion, Waste Pro South End Service Level Transition Plan. Who's got that item marked? Dan? Did Dan go take a break unauthorized?
Sir, I believe Mr. Chansey's here to come up and give an update on number four. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we're going to item number four right now.
That's correct. So Mr. Chansey's here to address the transition from the south end.
Okay.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rick Chansey at Waste Pro. Just a quick update. We got through the transition on the north side of the county and was very pleased with how that went. We are in the process of getting started on the south end now. The carts are being produced by our manufacturers as we speak. They'll start being delivered to us probably next Wednesday or Thursday. We anticipate the following Monday that we will begin the delivery on the south end to the customers. Again, they'll be receiving the two carts, just like we did on the north end. They'll have the opportunity to use their garbage cart once a week, and then if they're having the excess garbage, they can use their additional cart that they'll receive for that as well. I was fortunate to be able to take a couple of you folks out and look at some of those numbers. It looks like about 36% or 7% of the customers are using the second cart for their garbage, which is great. It's exactly what you guys asked for, and it shows that it's working. So we're excited about getting started down there. We anticipate that the changeover will completely take place by April the 1st. We've got some carts to get picked up. As part of this process, everybody gets their new carts, and we would, hopefully, by the end of April, should have the rest of the carts off the street. So with that, just kind of a general update, and I'm looking forward to taking that to the next step on the south end.
Okay. I was fortunate enough to go out with you on one of those ride rounds, and it was about 38, on the day we went, 38% were utilizing the second cart, or the green waste cart, for overflow household trash. I think we only saw one that actually had both full and a bag sitting by the side out of 562. I got the exact numbers, and the savant with numbers I am, you know, that showed that. So, you know, we appreciate that option. We had talked, I know you're getting ready to do the carts in the south end. When you're ready, I'm happy to engage with the homeowners associations down there, in particular, the one I live in, Hollyby the Sea. They're very strict about cans being left out on the street. I would like to approach them and go, hey, there may be, as you swap out cans, you can't guarantee them all in one day. If we can maybe work something out so residents don't get fined by their homeowners association while in the process of cooperating with you.
We are fortunate in that we have all the information for the customers down there. We have their telephone numbers, we have their addresses, all the actual contact information. We will do, use a type of robocall that we do whenever we have services that are changing or things that we need to communicate to the customers. We'll use that same system when it comes to, you know, that we'll be in this block or in this section, you know, on a given day. So we'll communicate that, we're sensitive to that down there to those folks.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Under this mask, you can't see the big smile I had on my face when you mentioned going on that delivery. And because instantly, an image came to me of Chicago Dave hanging on the back of a truck.
He wouldn't let me hang out on the back of the truck. I've hung off a fire truck, but I have yet to hang off the back of a garbage truck.
I was able to teach Commissioner Peash how to flip a lid open as he drove past, though.
My wife and I are using Waste Pro, and service has been great. The new cans are working great, and I'm one of them ones that has to use two a week, but everything's working out good. So I appreciate it. Unlike another truck that runs in my neighborhood that leaks oil and speeds up and down the road, I...